I'd like to call the September twenty-third Planning Commission Work Session to order. Heather, if you could call the roll.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea.
Here.
Ms. McBeth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Our first item on the agenda is a discussion on the following properties, two properties that we've already had a discussion of, but I guess we need final
Right.
decisions on what we're gonna do.
In order to move along and finalize a bunch of these chapters, there are a couple of properties that we discussed previously. And so I need some guidance and decisions from the commission members so that we can finalize those chapters. The first one is five thirty Millneck Road. And this is that property that's just off of Jamestown Road and off of Millneck. You can see it there. It's three point oh four six acres. We had a discussion on this last November. And basically, the commission agreed that a residential use was appropriate for this location. This is the current comp plan map, which shows it as office, and that green is the sensitive environmental area. I've outlined it in red there. This is the current zoning, which shows it as LB four. It's surrounded by B two, RS one, and RS two properties, basically on Millneck Road in the upper section with the church being RS one. I also included in the presentation, this is our Chesapeake Bay map. You can see that part of it is in the RPA, which is that green section on the map. I highlighted the property in red again. And the orange is RMA, just to give you an idea of some of that will not be total. The, any development that occurs on there is net available acres, not gross acres. And this basically shows the topo. I thought it was good for the commission to also see the topo. So it's, it's pretty flat up front with the steeper slopes towards the back, towards the ravine, which is what we, we would expect in this location. So the commission basically asked staff to come back with a recommendation. So as I mentioned, it's currently office in the comp plan. Commission basically said residential was appropriate. You didn't think multifamily was appropriate, and staff agrees with that. So staff is recommending low-density, single-family residential, which gives you three units per acre, basically. For zoning, staff is recommending to go from LB four to Single Family Dwelling District RS two. And the reason I did recommend in that is because I think, as you can see on here on Millneck Road, the section that comes in is RS two. And the lots are, as you can see, smaller than the RS one section that's over here. And as you saw, the ravine comes down through here that sorts of separates the properties. So staff thinks RS two is appropriate for residential use on this. And with that, that's my recommendation and open for discussion.
Are there initial comments?
Best way to go, yeah. I think it really makes sense.
The, the property owner agrees with this?
Yes.
I presume?
Yeah. I mentioned it to the property owner, even called the property owner on Monday and said, "We were discussing this today." And I had talked to him previously, and he thought that was an appropriate use.
I think it is reasonable. There are, there are already a mixture of businesses and residential on this stretch of that street, are there not?
Yes. What we have is, I can probably show you on this one better. You've got the church here.
Right.
You've got residential, residential, and you've got a hair salon here.
Yeah.
This is a city lot that's vacant.
Yeah.
And you've got CVS here and the office building for Getty and Harrison Hickman and the, the bank here.
Oh, that's, it's, it's the next, it's the next street.
Yes.
Where there's that little office park.
Right.
That, that one hair salon.
Is right here.
Old version of the city streets.
Right.
Special Drive Office Park.
Yeah.
Right.
But now it's real, it's a sore thumb that's stuck by itself. The whole road is RS two.
That's right.
And, so, yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm thrilled that the recommendation is RS two. I was thinking that the property owner was trying to push for the multifamily. And so somehow, I mean, I, I spent a little time in the zoning ordinance. About this was like great, uh, but it's like the continuation of RS two lots into that land. It's the only access is now through, you know, that side. Seems totally reasonable. Else would be changing from one spot zoning for a different spot zoning.
Great.
I think this makes sense.
So if the commission's okay with that, I'll go ahead and write that up as a recommendation in the appropriate chapters.
Sure, perfect.
Yep.
Okay. The next one, let me scroll down, is the multiple properties on South Henry Street that Watercrest came in and talked to us about in February. So this is the property. Basically, it's these properties outlined in red. This is the Oaks on Henry, and this is the office park down in this area. And I highlighted these two lots because these two lots are, are owned by the city. So any development in there would probably have to negotiate with the city on getting one or both of those lots. I did the same thing here. This is the current comp plan that basically shows it as sensitive environmental areas. You've got the Oaks on Henry over here. And these dots on the map are our green belt designation. So it's a green belt on Henry and a green belt along one ninety-nine also. This is the zoning classification, which is zone, the whole property, this whole thing is zone RS one. So RS one is our, uh, single-family dwelling district. So if an owner purchased the properties now, they would have the right to do three units an acre, basically, as single-family larger lot subdivision, similar to what's in Holly Hills subdivision that, that we currently have as an example. I also gave you the topo. The topo, as you can see, basically, you have two pods, I call it, a pod up here that's for development and a pod down here that could be possibly be developed and in here. So that's the slopes. Also gave you the Ches Bay, like I did in the previous lot. The green is the RMA and the orange is the R, I mean, the green is the RPA and the orange is the RMA. So basically, again, you see there are basically two pods. So we haven't really discussed this much, so I gave you some options for, for discussion. Uh, the comprehensive plan designation currently is sensitive environmental area and Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. On the next slide, also, the current comp plan in the infrastructure section says the College Creek, Creek Nature Area is a forty-five acre undeveloped area boarded by South Henry Street, right, one ninety-nine, and College Creek, and should be acquired by the city. The northern part of the site should be connected to the College Landing Park Marsh Walk, and the remainder of the area should be preserved as open space to maintain South Henry Street as a scenic entrance quarter. So back to the options, we have the options as far as the comp plan designation, and there may be more. This is just three that staff could think of. No change from the current designation, change to office and low-density, single-family detached residential. Another option would be the existing zoning and comp plan designations for this property should remain in place until an acceptable development is presented for rezoning to LB four and RS one zoning classifications. That is similar to what we did to some other properties in the city in the current comp plan. One of those I can think of right off the top of my head is the Mahone Properties up on Capital Landing Road, where the zoning designation was RS one and we changed it to LB four when they came in with a proposal to do the end concept for the three buildings there. So I throw that out as an option. And for the zoning, the current is, uh, Single Family Dwelling District RS one. Again, you could, the commission could be no change. You could recommend changing the RS one for the portion directly across from the Oaks with the portion across from the office complex being LB four. And then again, the third option is changing if, if a acceptable development is, is, uh, proposed. So like I mentioned, it's approximately forty-five acres. And I'll go back to the, that and open it up for discussion.
Forty-five acres, but five to eight are developable?
There's probably a little more than that, but as you can see, on this one, probably the best. Your pods there, you've got a nice area in here, which could be single-family. It's what Watercrest was, was showing in their development. And then you got a pod over here.
That's where the, the.
Right.
The RPA didn't exist when they built the code, the code in the, uh, Port Ann, right? Why some of the, and houses are in the.
Uh, some of them, as you can see, the backyards are. Right. Yep, that was done before Ches Bay.
Yeah, the RPA is also thrown.
So any development on that property would have to do a RPA delineation, a wetlands delineation, uh, to show exactly where the line is. You know, our maps are basically how the Chesapeake Bay delineations came. The city engineer back in nineteen ninety walked the ravines of the city, and he determined which ones were wetlands. And we basically drew those in from that walking and that determination. But like I said, it's just a guide, and over time, they change anyway.
Oh, yeah, considering the hot, the recurrent high water that you can see on the decking going out to the platform there at College Landing.
So that's why we require a current delineation if you're going to develop properties.
And for me, I think we should keep it at the same zoning. And I like that language in the comp plan of the city buying more of this as it is available, that it can maintain a, a green space. Because I think that is actually the highest use of this land. I mean, obviously, it's zoned RS one, so if the developer were to come back wanting RS one, we'd have to entertain that. But the idea of encouraging more intense use of this, I, I just can't go there.
Yeah, I agree. And I think we sort of got that impression from the neighbors.
Some of whom are here again today to make sure we got the impression.
Very valid points.
Yeah.
But I think, I don't see any reason to change any.
Nope. If we, if we did change, we'd be signaling that we would like to see this more intensively developed, and I don't think that's the case. So, um, it seems to me we should keep it as it is. Uh, it's not that we don't want, don't want to see development in the city, but we want to see it in the right place. And this doesn't seem like the right place for, uh, that kind of intensive development that, um, even the, even the relatively restrained redesignation, I think, would, would be, um, calling for. So I, I agree. I don't see, I don't see a strong case for changing the designation here. How far back, Carolyn, in the, in the comp plans, does that language go about the city acquiring, um, the rest of this property? Is that, I mean, has that been just floating for years?
I think it's been in there a while. I haven't looked to see exactly, but I can look it up and shoot you an email tomorrow and give you that.
Curious about that, yeah, because obviously, we're just sort of, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to develop. So we're all just enjoying the, the fact that it's very, you know, the, the property owners are gonna have a very tough time doing. Yeah, yeah. It would be nice to have a, a more, um, a clearer path forward toward city ownership, say. And I think the wishful thinking that's probably happening right now. And there's obviously precedent for it because Holly Hills backs up to a hundred and, a hundred and five acres that was purchased from the developer, um, when it turned out to be not, uh, you know, not feasible. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to beef up that language just a little bit to signal our, our consensus on this. Rather than just repeating the same language. Yeah.
Well, I tend to, uh, agree that, um, leaving the language the way it is is good. And at the same time, there's a piece of me that says, okay, so if we're the city and we say, "We should buy this down the road sometime, and until we get around to buying it, we're going to prevent you from developing it, and you get to keep paying taxes on it until we get around to buying it." And that, that seems to just sit a little wrong with me. Um, and I, I would like to see the, if we're gonna buy it, let's go ahead and, and move in that direction and make some arrangements. I mean, um, I, I think the city's probably creditworthy to arrange a plan or whatever it needs to, to get this done. But to, to have somebody say, "I've got somebody who'd like to develop this, can we," and, and it's a somewhat reasonable plan, "But we're just gonna obstruct it so that we can later on buy it one day." It just, it doesn't smell quite right to me.
I think that's a version of what Mr. Boswell.
I don't think it's an intentional block. I just, I, I feel for the owner who'd like to do something with it and.
Yeah, I think that's a version of what Mr. Boswell and I are both saying, which is to say, uh, for the sake of the owner, we ought to have a, a clearer roadmap to getting to what we think the, the best outcome is. I think we have consensus on what that outcome is, just not, we don't think we quite know how to get there yet. And, and I wouldn't characterize it as we're preventing them from doing anything because it's, it's already zoned RS one. So by right, it can be developed. It may not be, it may not be the most profitable. But by right, there is, it's not that the property can't be used, it's just very limited because of the constraint, not the constraints, because of the topography. So we had no say in any of that. Uh, I think all we're doing is saying we shouldn't make it a higher or more intensive, uh, uh, use designation. There's not a, there's not a good case for that. Uh, so we should leave it as it is and work toward a better outcome than, I, I think you're representing the, the owner's perspective pretty nicely, which is, uh, they have a parcel that they can profitably, um, make good use of right now. So, so what can we do? So I think we're, I think there's, I think we have basically consensus on this, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I mean, I, I totally appreciate your comments, Greg. Um, but I think that the desire to get to a better resolution for everyone is not obstructing, you use that word, the, um, property owner's ability to use the property. It is currently zoned for being used in an RS one fashion. But at the same time, we're not facilitating a more intensive use.
Yeah.
I think that's really, it's sort of a, a seesaw for me.
I would add, I, I think we've, we've touched on this idea, but I think that, just like with the last property we discussed, the RS one designation is not only consistent with what's been there already, but it's consistent with what's around it.
Yeah.
And I think we, we're not even having a conversation about RM one, but I think that's because that side of, of Henry Street there is RS one and has been. Um, I also think when we were looking at potential higher intensity uses, not only, obviously, was the topography limiting, but the way that, that Henry Street is laid out. In part because of the topography, it ends up having to sort of snake along at those higher elevations. Uh, and that makes it really difficult for turning and things like that. So I think, I think we're considering not just what the neighbors want, not just what we would desire as citizens of Williamsburg, but also what's, what's safe in terms of a, a use for that site. So anyways, I, I would add that, or, or I would say that I'm, I'm in agreement with the consensus that's emerging.
So I'm hearing, basically, the commission would like to leave it as it's currently designated. Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, but I think, I think there's also a sense that we ought to try to find, at this point, we don't have the mechanism to, to move the city toward purchasing this process, uh, property. But if there's some language that we can craft that indicates, um, our stronger support, I, I don't know, I don't know what that looks like. I, I, I tend to agree that, that we ought to, um, represent more forcefully what we think the right outcome is for this, for this parcel. And I'm not sure what else we can do as a, as a planning commission to make some progress on that. But I think there is a clear sense on this board that, that having the city own that parcel.
Language is there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I could think in the, if I remember correctly, in the parks and recreation, it was mentioned as a future park. Maybe we could add some additional language in there.
Yeah, that might help.
As a recommendation.
Yeah.
You know, how we're doing recommendations at the end of the chapters.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, something that goes beyond just, "Wouldn't it be nice if?" Which I think is where we are right now. Can we, can we go as far as saying encouraging, um, the city to explore, you know, things like a public-private partnership to buy it? Or, or, you know, that, that kind of thing? Sources of funding. I don't think we need to be more precise than that. Yeah. Obviously, the goal is to get these property owners paid of, you know, a fair amount for the, for the property, not. Yeah. Not to, not to do anything strong, strong-armed.
Okay. All righty, I'll take a stab at that, and we'll see it in maybe a couple of the other chapters. But these were just two properties that were hanging out there that we hadn't really discussed and reached a decision on. The other ones, of course, have come through with, uh, comp plan amendments and rezonings, which were the governor's insight and the Wada Bus site that we talked about, uh, several months ago too. But they actually came through with applications. So I think this is it as far as properties changing, uh, comp plan designations, unless we come across something on our next reviews with the other chapters.
And the, the Oaks, or the, across the street from the Oaks proposal, was a proposal from a potential buyer that if this could be rezoned, then they were interested in it. Is that, isn't that correct? It wasn't the actual owner, current owner?
That's right. This is a potential buyer that was looking at purchasing all those properties. And it's a bunch of them in there, and they're, they're mainly owned by the Thompsons and the Boards. The city owns those two lots, but there are a couple or three more individuals that owns those little teeny-tiny lots in there. So they were trying to, uh, acquire all of them to be able to, to do the development because it's, it's an old subdivision with paper streets. So if you buy some and you don't, and you've got little lots standing there, you still have to provide those individuals a way to get to their property if you try to get rid of the old paper streets. So you have to still give them right of way, so, which makes it even more complicated than something normally because if you own them all, you can, you can get rid of all the lines. But if you don't own it, then you still have, they have a right to be able to access their property.
And, and with the city owning those lots, that's really, that's really what can stop the development in the tracks if the city says, "We are not selling, we're not selling those lots to the developer."
Hey, I'll, that'll help move that along then. And with that, Aaron's gonna start with draft two of the economy chapter.
That's the important part.
Last meeting, we should probably, they mentioned this map. And, uh, this is the map that, uh, HRPDC. Be louder, but I was told to turn my mic on.
Okay. All of our guests have left at this point, so it's just.
And just stop me if, if you have anything we need to talk about. Um, the next map, I was able to also pull this from HR PDC. Um, it's kind of a zoomed-in version of the map that you saw in the last plan of the urbanized area, which really does, includes the entire city and a, a large portion of James City County and a little tiny bit kind of down here in the corner of, of York County. Um, but, but it's, it's mostly, it kind of reaches out, um, that little belt, I guess, that exists around one ninety-nine.
Are your page numbers different? You're on seven.
This is because of PowerPoint.
That's just PowerPoint, okay.
PowerPoint changes the pages for some reason. The page numbers in your, in your chapter should be accurate. The page numbers get shifted during the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'm a keynote, I'm a keynote guy, so I don't know about those problems.
Um, we updated some of the figures in here with two thousand eighteen employment numbers and two thousand nineteen enrollment numbers, uh, with, with, uh, CW and William and Mary. So let me get to this page because it's easier for me to read down here. Tourism and lodging, we spent a, a good portion of our time last meeting kind of discussing the best way to look at all of these numbers. Um, and, and what we kind of concluded was that we needed to focus on the, on the upper York County numbers and, and James City numbers and, and the city of Williamsburg. So we got those numbers together and didn't really make a whole lot of difference. Um, we did add table seven dash one, which is gonna show up on page, on your page, seven, six. And you can see here that the number of room nights can probably be attributed to this massive number of timeshares that we have in the adjacent jurisdictions. You know, we just, we can't compete with those numbers, um.
From, from a timeshare perspective, and I, I don't think we talked about this before, but what, I mean, when, because that's fractional ownership, obviously. So then it, it doesn't generate revenue in the same way that a hotel does, does it? I mean, how, how does that, here are the ones that I, that I'm familiar with.
So they're reported as overnight stays.
But they, but they, but they, but they own it, so they're not paying, you know, a hundred dollars a night kind of stuff, or, or room tax? Or they, or does that, how does that fit into the, how does that compare, is what I'm asking?
I'd have to clarify that with the, with Williamsburg Tourism Council. They, I just, I do, I know that they consider them in their room sales and they consider them in their room nights. Whether or not the tax revenue from that is, is, how that's being designated, whether it's designated as property taxes or it's designated as, uh, accommodations taxes, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because, because I know you can, if you own a timeshare and you don't want to use it, you can rent, you, you know, they're programmed to do that, so that would be. So I'm just wondering, yeah, with that, yeah, exactly. So with, with that giant number, I'm just wondering what the, you know, what the comparison really is.
I can get clarification on that for sure. I just, I know that when we had our conversation last time, we, we were just trying to figure out, you know, how both York County and, and James City County kind of surpassed Williamsburg and these, and these other two figures so quickly. And from gathering the numbers, I, I can almost one hundred percent attribute that to the number of timeshares in those jurisdictions.
So it's, it's Westgate and what's, what's the second one?
I'm sorry.
Westgate, what do we have in the city? It was timeshares, Westgate and?
Blue-green timeshares over on York.
Blue-green, yep.
Yep.
Didn't remember.
And you'll see, James City County did not report any bed and breakfasts when I requested them. I, I suspect there's a couple there, but they just, they weren't included in their list. And, uh, and I didn't get the, I didn't get a list to compare from Williamsburg Tourism Council to see if they're pulling, you know, different, um, but those are the numbers that were reported to me by the adjacent planning jurisdictions.
So this is fascinating, and, and, and we don't, I, I think you said this, but I just wanted to make sure I heard it right. We don't have occupancy data for the timeshares, right, only for the hotels and bed and breakfasts? In other words, does, um, Smith Travel Research, uh, do those figures include the timeshares? Or does that exclude the timeshares?
I do not think it includes the timeshares. I think that there's kind of a discrepancy there that we're getting certain, a block of numbers from the Williamsburg Tourism Council, and they're, they're including timeshares. And the Smith Travel Research, I don't believe, I think that they're strictly hotels, inns, and beds and breakfasts. That's what their focus is. So the next, um, conversation that we had was a discussion about income. And we added in here the definitions from the Census Bureau for per capita income. We had a conversation about that, as well as household income. Um, and if you, if you look at, uh, our numbers, we're, we're just below the national median household income, by about four thousand dollars. And, and that kind of helps balance out the, the question that we had as to why adjacent jurisdictions were so high. And we had a conversation also about the, the effects of the college students, um, and reporting income because a lot of them are, are not reporting income or not employed. And so when, when they're surveyed as part of the census. And so when, when they're surveyed as part of the census, those numbers get a little skewed for the city, whereas the adjacent jurisdictions don't have the concentration of student population in them.
Yeah. Some of the hard, some of the, yes, The Economist makes, comes out like income versus wealth, you know?
Yes.
Especially the 3701 tract between the students and retirees in some of the neighborhoods. I mean, income versus wealth is a huge driver here.
It very much is. And I was, I was getting ready to point out, so we added the map here that we talked about last time because on the next page, we have a table that includes a conversation about income by census tract. So to bounce kind of back and forth a little bit, the, this 3703, get the pointer out here, is kind of this, this northern part of the city. 3702 is out here, kind of on the other side of the railroad there, includes Capital Landing Road and York Street and that area. And then the 3701 is going to include the downtown area, the historic neighborhoods, the historic area and, and the newer developments out here along Jamestown Road. So if we kind of roll into the next page, we can look at the population of those census tracts and the income per capita and the household and family incomes. You can also note in there the number of persons under 18 living below the poverty level. And it's, it's quite a clear discrepancy when you look at the census tracts as to where those, where those folks are located. The next figure that we have talks about income by percentage of total households. We talked a little bit about this last time. I just added some additional language here about the large range of income can be attributed to a number of factors in the city. Lower range of income is likely due to students and those living on social security and SNAP benefits. The upper range of income is most likely dual income or multi-income households. And the middle range is an indicator of a larger middle-class population. So we, we have, we do have some pretty big extremes on either end, but we have kind of this middle ground as well.
Do you have a sense for where wealthy retirees fit into this? Is that a demographic that we can?
Um, I can go back and look.
You're making some guesses about, about things in here and I suspect that our retirees probably skew to the higher end of the scale than.
I think there is some information on that and I know I've seen it, so I'm wondering if it might possibly be in the population chapter because we talked about retirees in that chapter and kind of, I think we touched a little bit on, on income, but I can look into that and see. I know I've seen the data, so I have a table for it somewhere.
Yeah, and I, I guess it sort of depends on what, what income is, right? For the purposes of this table.
Correct.
Is income solely so-called earned income where you're getting a W-2 or does it include, you know?
It includes, so they, they include everything from earned income to social security, retirement and public assistance.
So it is investment income too? Yeah, so, so there's, those retirees are in here, probably in the right half for the most part.
I would suspect, yeah.
But this is the survey, right? So it's.
This is an American Community Survey, so there is, A, there's a, there's a large kind of range of error in data there, but it's also voluntary participation, so.
Okay.
And I'll give a little plug for the census. If you haven't filled yours out or you don't think your neighbors have, please have them do that. This data is key for us to be able to, to look towards our future. So the next page we're going to go into is retail sales. And I think if I remember correctly, we just clarified this data, we, we kind of, I think the original table showed back to 1970 or 1980 and so we've, we've removed that data and kind of brought it from 2000 forward. So you'll see a little bit of a dip in things around, or slowing in things around the 2010 census and then 2019 data is stronger. For the next page, there was just some clarification there and then we added this information down here about the city's bond rating. We had talked about that, about the city's, you know, ability to borrow funds and support capital improvement projects and things like that. These figures have been updated by HR PDC for us and discuss historic trends and future They, that first bit of employment in greater Williamsburg, you can kind of see how in 2000 we kind of slowed down, whereas James City County and York County continued to grow in employment. Employment share, the gap in between the city and the adjacent jurisdictions has continued to grow. We, the HR PDC did not have updated information beyond 2015 for this, so that's why, that's where we're, we're holding there. And I don't think there was any change on the next slide either. Nope. So that's draft two.
Definitely helps to have the dates consistent throughout. Yeah, thank you.
So I'll look into your, your question, Mr. Roswell, about the, the timeshares and revenue, what, what that revenue is counted as. And I'll also look into that income question as far as where our older population kind of skews on that, on that scale.
I, I don't think that last one is critical, but as long as you're making a, a statement about what, what we think the sources of that income are, be useful to have that informed by the fact that there is a very large population of retired people here.
Correct.
Who anecdotally, many of them anyway, are relatively wealthy.
I'm going to hand this back over to Carolyn. Talk about transportation now.
Wow.
I've got most of them. If I didn't, that's what it is when you see it. This, I think, is basically no changes to it. Along that, I did add the section here. Bottom in red. Also, table two also projects. This table. Back and change.
In the, the Henry Street that's in the narrative section, is that South Henry? Or is this Henry, the whole Henry?
Ride 199 to Ireland Street. Ireland Street to Francis Street. Fourth Henry Street from Lafayette Street to 1325 is 173.
That's the head rate. Yeah, cool, yeah.
Basically said all of Henry Street.
And, and those, I'm sorry if we talked about this last time and I've just forgotten, those projections are, are based on what, anticipated development, on changing traffic patterns, what, what?
It's based on the HR PDC.
Uh huh.
It has to, is required to do a 20, already done a 2040 update.
Uh huh.
And every five years you have to have another update. So in 2045, based on our zoning, our comp plan, anticipated development, this is the projections that they show that traffic volumes in the city and all the jurisdictions.
I, I guess one of the reasons I, I, I ask is, no, wait a second, Matoka Court is listed in there. That just kind of jumped out at me because that's a dead end. And, but then in the table, it's not Matoka Court, it's, looks like it's Merrimack Trail, unless I read the table wrong. Because I was going to say, well, why, why would Matoka Court get 100% increase in traffic unless some, something was changing down there, it was going to become a through road or something, right?
On my table.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it's listed in the narrative as one of the, as one of the alarming streets, so I think that might just be a mis-transcription from Merrimack Trail.
Merrimack Trail.
Makes a little more sense with Merrimack.
Matoka, yeah. Matoka is a cut through for a lot of people to avoid the Richmond Road, Monticello intersection.
Yeah, I think that's where it is.
So while it does dead end down there, they cut over from Mount Vernon.
Right.
Yeah.
People are avoiding that intersection that's been working.
Right. Right.
There's a lot of cars that cut through there. It's right across from my office and.
Yeah.
I'd avoid doing that, but.
Yeah, I see a lot of cars on there that I don't think live there.
Yeah.
Have a new one.
Huh.
But I'll check that number and make sure.
Yeah, interesting. Well, yeah, it looks like it's Merrimack anyway, rather than Matoka.
The current number is Merrimack. Matoka is its own story. And Matoka may, will, it could become more or less of a cut through depending upon how people like the new street arrangement.
Probably is going to depend on the traffic volumes on.
I know it scared the heck out of me when two lanes started doing a left-hand turn in front of me when I was there. I was like, wow, what are you doing? Then I'm like, then I see the relined road, I'm like, okay, now there's two lanes doing that.
Wait for the rundown.
On this page, basically I just noted. On the maps I added in North Era. Ah, yep.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I like these maps.
Lightways plan. Thirteen. On page. I.
Might want to, you might want to connect up the, the Parkway.
Yeah, I was going to say the Colonial Parkway.
It's, it's missing, it's missing the tunnel.
The middle part?
The tunnel.
Is that considered illegal to go through the tunnel on a park?
Oh, is it, is it illegal on, anybody?
Good catch.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, that's right.
I wouldn't, yeah. I, I wouldn't want to be seeing it.
No.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, through the tunnel. So we shouldn't encourage bad behavior by showing it, linking.
Black line. No, you can see it, yeah. Yeah, that's amazing. God, what a ton of work. Might it help this map if you just, if you just eliminated the no sidewalk streets? In other words, I don't need to know where there are no sidewalks, I just need to know where there are sidewalks if I'm trying to walk someplace. You see what I mean?
I could try and see where to look.
Yeah, it'd be worth looking at.
Yeah.
I think.
I think it's important that we do have the no sidewalk on there though because it shows where.
Where we have problems.
Where there might be critical gaps, right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, some of these small neighborhood streets, it probably doesn't matter, but I think it's still worth.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I showed both. I showed one with.
Uh huh.
And one with that.
Okay.
So then you could.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about readability, but, but I take Mr. Schaller's point that, that we do, you know, if there are sections of town where there are critical needs for sidewalks, and we've talked about a couple, it's worth highlighting that.
What's the, what's, is that planned out already or?
That's gotta be.
It'll be tricky. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We were talking about that last time.
If you, yeah, if you didn't have all that parking.
So like, but then there would only be parking on one side of the street, so one side of the street's houses would lose the ability to park in front of their houses, like on Boundary? I thought we were talking about Griffin and Newport.
We're talking about Griffin.
Griffin and Newport. There's already. Continuing the sidewalk on. Let's see.
Newport. Which part would happen quicker?
Before would happen faster.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. That's right.
For all of it, actually.
Yeah.
They don't use sidewalk at all, that is right down the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
And it's a stinky little sidewalk, it's too narrow.
Well, it's narrow, it's all-
It's a little narrow and it's all chopped up and-
Yeah.
And the house, I mean, the house on the corner of Newport almost backs up to Griffin. I mean, there's just, you know, that much space there, so I was just wondering, it just seems like a tricky, a tricky proposition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
They're definitely both, but that's, that full range of that turn there of the two streets, I mean, it's, cars on both sides the whole way. I mean, there's a lot of cars that would need to figure out a place to be. Yeah.
Yeah, that's much better. The, I'm just looking again, just to make sure, the connector, the Strawberry Plains connector that we've talked about, that's, I acknowledge is complex. I don't see that listed in here as a- Okay, great. 1216? Oh, there it is, Strawberry Plains, John Taylor, yeah, okay. I just, I was looking for sidewalks and so, okay. That's great, I just wanted to make sure it hadn't dropped off, because- Yeah, great. That's great.
Great, so what's our bigger plan? The November hearing date, because the work session dates the day before Thanksgiving, correct? We typically skip off that one. Yeah, and that was the next part of the question that I had, are, besides simply a normal hearing, public hearing, is there any kind of actual public meeting that you're planning, wanting to have with this? It's just, sometimes when the compliances have had big public meetings in the Striker, in the community building, obviously, we don't really want to have a mix and mingle meeting at this point, since we can't have a vaccine in anything. We're just going to have a straight public hearing here, come look at it. Because people have been able to come- Yeah, I don't think-
For the final. Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, then, you're thinking that once we hit flu season, we might have to go back to virtual meetings, is that what you're thinking? Right. Oh, yeah, understood, all that. We have to backtrack. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood. So I guess my, if I'm understanding all the different parts of this, my preference would not be to have an important public meeting smashed in between Passover and Christmas and travel and all this other kind of stuff. So I would prefer to move over to January. However, if in the next six weeks or something like that, we're feeling less confident that we're maintaining our status at Phase Three, and that we could be closed down for months, I would feel more persuaded to potentially have a December meeting, but that would not be my preference. My preference would be to get on the other side of the holidays. I mean, does anyone? Right. Oh, perfect. Yeah, I mean, I guess I think it's wise to have something, and the public comment, I think is probably the way to do it now that you're laying that out, something ahead of the meeting that we're going to vote on it up and down, where people feel that they have a place to be. I mean, while we've been working on this for a couple of years now, you always have people who come out like, what? They're voting on it right now, and this is when I came for the public hearing? So, yeah, I think that's a good strategy. Okay, that sounds like a plan. Okay, so we don't have to have a final open forum since nobody's here. Anything else? Okay, great, we're adjourned, we'll see each other in October.